Let's just wait a couple of minutes. We'll see if Allison comes in. Five, we'll start the meeting. Call to order. We do have a quorum. And should I mention, we do, Carrie May could not attend because of surgery and Allison Clark, we're not sure about, but we do have a quorum, so we can go ahead and get started. If she comes in later, that's okay. Okay, item number, well, first of all, let me just say, are there any citizens with business not scheduled on the agenda? Who would like to speak at this time? Okay, I don't see anybody new coming in, so we've got that covered. Item number one on the agenda, consideration and possible action regarding regular meeting minutes of the February 2nd, 2021 meeting.
I've read them. They looked good, so I moved to approve the meeting minutes from February 2nd, 2021.
Okay, can we get a second on that?
I second it.
Okay, Marion's, Marion Walker seconded. It's, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Is unanimous? Anyone opposed? No, unanimous. The motion passes. Item number two on the agenda, consideration and possible action regarding the following exterior modifications at 14351 Liberty Street in the Historic Preservation District. There's two items, A and B. A is front facade painting and B is new building sign. I was suggesting might as well take them separately. We can start with A, the front facade painting.
Members of the commission, you have in your packet the information for the paint colors that the applicants would like to use. And again, on the line is Carl Brash. He and his wife Debbie are the new owners of the Antique Emporium. And as you have seen, they're doing some painting and then are, and then a rebranding, I suppose, of the store. So with that, I will turn it back over to you. And again, Mr. Brash is on the line if you have any specific thoughts or questions for him.
Thank you.
And I think one thing that I'll add is that the repainting was, you know, kind of in part due to some, had to some repair and things like that that the applicants had to do. So that was, you know, kind of part of the reason or the need for repainting was the repair of some wood and stuff on the facade.
Yes, thank you for that, Dave, because it sounds like this will be a nice upgrade with areas that were peeling and there'll be some scraping involved. I'm just taking one more look at the colors.
Dave, this is more a question for you. So the downtown, the Historic Preservation District, there are no like color palettes that property owners have to stay within. Is that correct?
There are not that are part of the ordinance. There are design guidelines that are not adopted. So I do want to stress that they're not official, but essentially what the, you know, when they set the historic district up, what they, you know, kind of the handful of colors that are not acceptable in downtown are fluorescent and metallic, I believe. But I think everything else is, you know, kind of open to, you know, the applicant and to the commission to pick from, just nothing fluorescent or, you know, a metallic color. If, if any of you guys were here, I know, you know, a lot of us were, but there was the, the zebra painted building downtown for a while with the, you know, I think with the hot pink, you know, side on it. And I think that, you know, kind of, you know, those were the colors that they said, okay, that's a bit beyond what, you know, what goes, but anything else is open.
And I might add, let me just add this for, because we do have a lot of new people. About, oh, maybe six months or more ago, last year, we did approve a residential home on Carol.
Just down the street from this one, right?
Caroline Street, yes. And it was very similar to this. It has a really nice look to it with the, with the light trim with that blue. So yes, it was very similar to this. And I think it may have been something that was done probably in the old days quite a bit too.
Yeah, I was actually going to ask, like, if, Mr. Brash, if you know if it's the same color as that house down the street.
No.
Thinking.
Right across from Lutheran Church on.
Right. No, no, sir, no, ma'am, I do not know.
Okay.
We were just trying to get something that was within the era, but was different from the other buildings that's surrounding this building.
Yeah, and I can tell you, I think the, this dyed indigo is, it's probably just a shade or two lighter blue than the other one. But it's, you know, it's sort of the same idea.
And the sign is metallic type, kind of aluminum, if you rattle it, make it moist or whatever, so it doesn't curate?
Correct, because that was the problem we had with the other sign. We got up there, we really weren't, weren't going to change the sign until we got up there and I started replacing some rotten wood. And there was only one screw holding the sign on. So that had to come down. I said, well, if we're going to change the sign, we're going to go back to the original name, Homewood, that actually had a building on that property back in 1880s, which is my wife's great-great-grandfather. And we're going to just call it Homewood Market. And that's actually where her great-great-grandfather built his first mercantile store and lived upstairs. So that's one of the reasons we went back to, to the name Homewood. And it also ties in with our house here on 303 Mason Street, which is Homewood.
I like that.
That's good history, yes.
So the, the dyed indigo, there, see this, the old sign in front of the store now that says Montgomery Antique Emporium? It's going to be a little darker than that sign right there, right? The blue you're talking about?
Uh, well, it's hard to say because that sign is so faded.
Yeah, it's faded.
Uh.
It's a little darker than that, yeah.
Let's see.
It looks, it looks like it's going to be a little darker than that.
Yes, yes, it is. It probably was that color at that time.
Yeah.
But it's, it's going to be a little darker than that, yes.
And so the accent, the white, this will give us an example of how it's going to pop and what it'll look like if you, if you're driving down the street. And actually, this antique store is sitting back off the road a little bit, and sometimes it's missed when you drive by because the other ones just are a little bit up closer to the road. So that blue would probably make it pop, but anyway.
That's our hope.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's our hope for the renters.
And like you say, Marion, it'll be seen well up high like that. And since we're talking about the sign, I'll mention, just a reminder to everybody that we typically go with, that size is fine on that side, on that size of a building, you know, we just can't go over 60% of the wall space. So size, size wise, or, well, I, I don't mean to, if you want to just talk about the paint right now, we can talk about the sign after.
Is the sign going to be just like that white with black letters on it?
Yes.
Okay.
And that will really stand out on the blue.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. And the size, yeah, the size of the sign is four foot by eight foot.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it does, it falls within the, the size perimeter.
Yes, sir. I've not done the calculation on it just because it seemed so well, you know, or so far below 60% that it, that it didn't seem to merit, you know, really running the numbers on, I think.
Exactly, yes, because you're looking at the whole front of the building, yes.
All right, so we've had this question before in the past. This sign is digital right here. Is that a correct statement? And that this is not the actual sign. This is just.
Correct, correct.
But when, but when the sign comes, it's going to be this measurement, it's going to be aluminum, aluminum panels, and it's going to be that size, it's going to be white, and it's going to have that black lettering. It's going to look exactly like that. Because remember, guys, when we talked about a previous sign, we did ask the question. We said, this is a digital. But it looks like all the paperwork is completed on this. Application. And they do have an example and they do have the measurement. But it's not the actual sign. That's all I'm bringing to the table, because in the past, we did ask, was it an actual sign? And I guess you're waiting for the approval so that you can go ahead and get the sign made?
Correct. For, for, for cost purposes, I would rather have the sign approved before made and save myself $400, $500. But yes, that is the entire reason for having her fill this paperwork out. And it, and it will be that exact sign, the exact lettering, color, size, everything.
Yes, and that, that's a good question, Marion. Just because of things that have happened in the past, maybe not being clear, but I will say that the way this is presented is just the, it's the way we like it, because it's got all, it gives you all that detail about the aluminum. And so appreciate the detail on that.
Is that all the advertisement you'll be doing for Homewood Market? Or will there be anything else closer to the road later on, or?
Well, we'll, we'll probably ask about that. We would like to have possibly on the weekends, usually on maybe a Friday or Saturday, maybe a little, I call them an A-frame or card frame type sign to stick out, but bring back in when the store closes.
I was thinking, I was asking in, in type, like a permanent, but no, that's enough, that's.
No. Yeah, I really would like to stay away from something permanent there, because there's a lot of people that park there and don't even come into the store. They're either going to the wine shop next door, they're going to get wings, et cetera. So there's a lot of movement within those four or five spaces right there in front of that building.
Okay, the light above it, on the application, it says it's not illuminated, but the light above it, would that be shining on it at nighttime?
That light above it will be removed. There'll be two of the little lights actually on the roof that will shine towards it.
Okay.
And, and it will be from dusk till dawn, just like that current old farm light is doing right now.
Okay.
And yes, it is on at night. If you drive by at night, it's, it's still shining, but the problem is it's shining during the daytime as well. So I'm burning some electricity that doesn't need to be burned.
So you're going to put two lights on the opposite side of it?
Yes, and they're kind of going to be angled toward it. That's my plan. I have two lights. I may just use one.
Okay.
Those will be mounted on the roof there below, just to clarify, will they be mounted on the?
Yes.
Does that need approval, David, or is that something that just, is that something that we have to ask about?
Yeah, Dave, you might want to just give your background on that, because I know we've had, there were some issues. It was only when with the light was shining forward or creating a, too bright, but.
Right. So one of the, you know, so, so for the cities, the city has a, has a lighting ordinance, which does require all exterior fixtures to either be cut off or full cutoff fixtures. In that, you know, typically that would, you know, it, it just needs to be a shielded light, essentially. If it's, you know, so you can make a shielded light work, you know, shining from below, you know, to the, you know, toward the sign. But, you know, it's, it, essentially the light has to stay on the sign, you know, and on the, you know, and on the facade immediately. Around the sign can't be, you know, an example, if you saw the wings over Montgomery sign or the light that they had put, that was, you know, more of like a floodlight that, you know, not only lit up the, you know, the top of, you know, the parapet wall that was above the porch, but was also, you know, bright enough and, you know, not focused enough in that it, you know, kind of shone everywhere, you know, up above. So, you know, when you look at that lighting, you know, again, you know, the lighting, you know, the most important thing, again, on the lighting is that it does stay contained to the sign and the, in the immediate area around the sign, essentially. You know, it can't be a spotlight. To just touch real quick on the A-frame sign, those are allowed under the ordinance. There's no permit or anything needed, you know, like you say, they go out, you know, when the business is open and they come in when it's not, you know, mainly so they don't walk off at night.
Right. Now, that sign, that, that light is, is going to be shining just for that sign. And, yeah, if it's too bright, I'll be happy to change it. But it has a cover on it and it's not a spotlight. It's actually made, it's an LED light, and it's made for signings.
Got you.
And the way that shines right now is it kind of shines down, but the farm light also shines out. So I mean, it hits from one side of the building to the other. If, if you're looking toward 149 from the building. So this will really just kind of hi- highlight the Homewood Market sign. That's all I'm looking to do.
Right.
And Mr. Brash, let me just mention, you know, the A-frame type signs do seem to work well. And I'll just mention that we're trying to, as we look forward, stay away from, you know, ban, the banners have been somewhat of an issue, which we've addressed, and those were sometimes temporary, but not meant to be permanent. And I'm only mentioning that to you because it's come up lately. We've been trying to, to kind of keep an eye on, on the temporary banners. But the A-frame style sign you speak of is quite, you know, in keeping for that type of business.
Yes, sir.
What is the side of the building look like? Is it, is it going to be, is it yellow?
No, it's metal. It's metal on the sides. It's sheet metal on the sides, it's sheet metal in the back.
Okay, I just remembered.
Yes, ma'am.
Looks like you want to do a nice quality improvement on the building, and we'd like to see that. Let me just ask you one more question. It's not about this agenda item, but just so we know, are, how are you, your business, how is it going to differ from the existing antiques? Is it, is it more than, is it a combination of things that you?
Well, it's, it's all antiques right now. We have a few people that have just left. And we want to bring different types of setting with antiques to bring it up to the market level that surrounds us right now.
Yes.
As we know, everything is changing, a different class of people is moving in, different types of people. And what they have in there now, it does sell, but it's not selling in, in my eyes enough to keep somebody there for long periods of time. So we're bringing in new ideas, possibly selling certain types of old candy, old drinks, bringing in some different types of furniture where people have either painted or refurbished and added something kind of new to something old and trying to make it to where somebody would like to put that in their house now.
Yeah.
Doesn't really have to be an antique house. It could be a newer house with a nice piece of furniture or nice fixtures or just different things like that. We have a few vendors in there that do really good. And we have a few vendors who do not like to change things out, and I'm in the market to try to coach them. And even though, you know, you own the building, you don't really dictate what they sell. But if I can coach and counsel somebody and explain to them how they can increase their sales through more of a mixed market by season or by, you know, spring, summer, and fall, it really does help. It's been a proven factor in other buildings that we have had. We've had the Western Winery, we had that, we opened that up in the city of, here in Montgomery. My wife and I, and we actually had the first wine festival.
Yeah.
We started the first wine festival. So we're not, uh, just a new starter in there. I'm not by far going to say I know everything. I've, I've actually been talking to some dealers in Conroe that has been in the market for a long time. I like to have monthly meetings with my renters, and we're going to bring them in and try to give them some different ideas. Doing our monthly meetings and try to help sales out and help people come in and change things up. Because we've heard a few things since I've been working on the building. When people walk in and walk out, I always sit there and listen to them. And to me, that's a problem if you walk out with nothing in your hands.
Well, yeah, and well, appreciate your answer. We, we all realize that these things evolve over time.
Right.
I don't mean to try to pin you down on what you're going to be doing, but just that gives us a real good idea of what your general idea. And it sounds great, lots of variety and maybe a little bit more for different people, so.
More, more gift ideas for people, you know, birthday gifts, seasonal gifts, things that can, can, can help out with, with their rent and things that can help out increase sales.
Exactly. Well, thank you for sharing.
No problem.
When would the work begin?
As soon as you approve it.
All right, and if you approve it tonight, do you have an estimated time of completion?
Hopefully within one month. It, you know, we're only talking about the front of the building.
Right.
So I'm, I'm really going for a week, because I made everybody take everything off the porch. And they're buying at the boat to rent the porch and put things back on it, but we wanted to update it. There's a lot of rotten wood had to be replaced, some of the things had to be fixed that we're in the process of doing. And we just wanted to make sure that what we do is going to last for a while. And once we get it finished, then we'll be able to move things back on the porch. But I don't even think it's going to take a month. I just, I'll cover myself and say a month, but it shouldn't take more than a couple of weeks.
Are you open for big business now? It sounds like.
Yes, yes.
And it sounds like you all are going to be doing some of the work, the prep work yourselves.
Oh, I'll be.
Might help get it done too.
Yes, sir. I'll be doing it after work.
Well, you'll be motivated. That's good.
Oh, I'm always motivated.
Yeah, great.
So, okay, one, one question on this. So the paint color is strictly going to be on the, like, the front facade of the building? It's not going to be on the sides or the back of the building? Is that correct? Is that what I understood?
Correct, and that's what's written on the form.
Okay.
That's our deal. I will not take.
Okay, I, because at first I saw the color and I thought, okay, we approved that house, you know, a few months ago. And I actually went back while we were chatting and that color was more on the navy scale. And so when I saw this, I was a little bit like, oh, I don't know. But again, I don't do marketing in any way, so, and I am not a business owner trying to attract, you know, customers. But I think that if it's just limited to the facade, I, I feel a lot better about that. So I appreciate that clarification.
And yes, Brittany, I will add, you're right, that was a deeper blue. And this, for a business, looks like it's, it's a little brighter, maybe catches your eye a little more. It's just got a little more metallic in the other thing.
What you're going to do with the front doors?
They're actually going to be the same color, I believe, red. It'll be spruced up, it'll be painted, but it'll be the same color.
Well, I appreciate you answering our questions. And I don't know if anybody has anything else, but I would, I'll make a motion if nobody has anything else.
I'm good.
Okay, I moved to approve the paint and the sign for the property at 14351 Liberty Street.
I second it.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Is anybody opposed? No opposition? The motion passes. Unanimous. And thank you, Mr. Brash, Mr. Brash, we're, we appreciate you actually attending. That really helps us a lot.
Yes, sir.
Good luck with that. Best of luck. We'll look forward, look forward to it.
Oh, it'll be nice. It'll be nice. That's our goal. But thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Do you all need me to stay on, or?
Well, this is, sure, we, this is a fairly light agenda tonight. We only have one more item, and it might be of interest to you just to kind of see how things work here in the city.
Sure.
Okay, so we've got the item number three. It is the last item on the agenda. And it's consideration and possible action regarding approval of the final plat for Hills of Town Creek, Section Four. This would be the Hills of Town Creek behind the high school.
That's right. And members of the commission, you have in your packet two, two memos from the engineer. One is on the final plat, and then one is just kind of a general update, just to kind of circle back to some items that, that you guys had talked about previously. And just wanted you to have kind of the latest bit of information. In, in addition to, the, the engineers for the developer came back and said, hey, there was one easement that they needed to add on the final plat on one lot. But with that, and before I start to get things wrong, I'm going to turn it over to Catherine, who is on the, on the call with us. So she can answer any specifics you have, or, you know, better summarize maybe what I did not.
Thank you, Dave.
Good to see you.
Good evening. It's great to see everyone. So in your packet, like Dave was mentioning, the first memo is our recommendation for approval of the, of conditional approval for the final plat. So as Davis also mentioning, in the past couple of days, Mid-South Energy has come back to the developer and required a 10-foot utility easement along the north boundary of Lot 7, which is at the north end of Colby's Way, the, the road on, on your plat. So that is one difference from what is shown in your packet to what is actually on the docket for approval is the, the actual final flat that you would be considering approval for, it does have that 10-foot utility easement. Our memo mentions conditional approval with the contingent upon receipt of 100% bid bond for the construction amount. We did receive the PDF version of this today, and so we're just waiting on the hard copy to arrive at City Hall. And then that will all be resolved. There will be no more conditions left for approval on, on the spot. So this is one that you've already approved, the preliminary plat, and this is just the final plat. The next item in your packet, the, the next memo from us is just an update on the project. So as I'm sure you may have noticed, behind the high school, they are moving and grooving in construction. So they have installed most of the utilities, and we've been out there for inspection. And right now, they're working on paving, so they're working on the roads and curbs and getting everything paved out there. So there's a couple of photos included in your packet as well, just so you can get an idea of what's going on. And if you haven't been by, take a drive by and take a look at what's going on there. They're doing some good work out there. So that's what's on your agenda for approval is just contingent, or, excuse me, conditional approval of the final plat contingent upon receipt of the 100% bid bond for the construction now.
Thank you. And can we, I think, Dave or whoever, can you put that back? Just trying to visualize the lot number seven. When it got blown up, I, I was trying to see where it was in relation to the rest of the project.
Sure, too. As I pull it back up and share the screen, I'll kind of dial you in on it. Lot 7, as Catherine mentioned, is on the far north end. If, now that I'm sharing my screen, you can kind of see here, we've got the endless way extension. And then this little teardrop shaped piece of property to the north of the cul-de-sac that is a city property that is right now kind of planned on being used as a future water plant site. And the easement is, is adjoining that Lot 7. So if Lot 7 is in kind of the middle of my screen here, you can see where the size of Lot 7 is much larger than, say, Lot 5 or 6 or 9 or 10 across the street. And so with the width of the lot, the developer felt like, you know, adding that 10-foot easement on the north side, because you'll notice there is an eight-foot worth of 16-foot easement on the south side. That is the city storm sewer. And, and this easement on the north side will, will also hold the, or will only hold the electrical and, you know, I suppose some telecommunications if they needed it in there. But you can kind of see in this blue line right in the center of the screen where they're looking at adding that easement just right along that north side.
Yes, yes, that's very helpful. I, now I can see the width, the, the width is substantially wider than the others, so.
And.
It is. And what was on the, what's in the version that's included in your packet is already a five-foot building line. So we're not going from zero buffer to 10 feet. We're going from five-foot building line to a 10-foot build. So we're not going from zero buffer to ten feet. We're going from five-foot building line to a ten-foot building line and utility easement.
Okay.
And just to add on the, the origin of the easement, this, um, the, what I'm, uh, showing on the screen here is a marked up version of their plat that was done by Mid-South. So, um, Mid-South is who came back to request that easement, uh, be added. It wasn't a change on the developer's part, but just an accommodation of the electric company.
Okay. Well, that, that's good detail, very helpful. So, yes, as, as Catherine mentioned, we, when we make the motion, we just need to make sure it's, I guess, contingent was the, I'm not sure what the, you all might have seen what the, what the, uh, wording was on that.
Right, again, you know, just as a reminder, it would be, uh, conditional on the receipt, which I've got the PDF version that I got, uh, late this afternoon, but I don't have the, the original one, but the, the developer has added the city to their, uh, to their bond. So, so we've got the, you know, we've got the paper, albeit still waiting on originals, but we've at least, we've, we have the paper in hand for what we had asked them to, to provide to us, so.
Okay, well, I will move to, um, approve this plat conditional upon the receipt of a performance bond for a hundred percent of the remaining construction contract, um, in a form acceptable to the city for, uh, the Hills of Town Creek, section four.
I second it.
Very good. We have a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. It's unanimous. The motion passes. And thank you, again, thank you all, and, uh, this works very well to be able to get that detail through the marvel of electronics. But yes, thank you, Catherine. Good to see you.
You're very welcome. Great to see you all.
And that is the last item on your agenda tonight. It's a pretty light agenda.
Yes. Well, we look forward to the future and, uh, the coming year. Hopefully we all get, we know we're gonna get back to more normal as time goes on, and we look forward to it. Appreciate you all. Guess we just need a motion for adjournment.
I make a motion for adjournment.
Yeah, I, I will second that motion.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
Aye.
Take care.
Absolutely.
Hey, Dave, real quick.
Yes.
Real quick, if, uh, the, uh, with the governor's, um, announcement today, does that mean next meeting will be in person?
That's what we've been kind of, you know, talking about, trying to, uh, you know, read the tea leaves, if you will, the, the Texas Open meeting suspension was tied to the public health, uh, disaster declaration. So when he, when the governor repealed, uh, certain, um, executive orders, none of them specifically had to do with the city meetings. That, again, was part of, you know, part of a different, you know, part of the health, uh, disaster declaration. Um, that said, if, if the state is open at, uh, one hundred percent for all businesses, you know, it would seem logical to conclude that very, very soon, and I believe it's March the sixth, is when, so what the governor's done is extend the online meeting provision, uh, thirty days at a time since last March. The most recent one expires on March the sixth, and so we're really kind of waiting for for legal guidance to see. I think our own in-house, um, assessment of it is that if all businesses are open at a hundred percent, there are no occupancy restrictions, that it would certainly seem, you know, a logical step or conclusion to believe that that's about to include city government as well. The city is working on, hopefully by, um, by the first council meeting in April, we should be, uh, live with, in, with a live streaming from the council chambers, which, you know, in the event that, that the occupancy limitations are still in effect, that the city board itself will be able to meet in the room in the council chambers. And, you know, we would still have enough room in there for, you know, a few, uh, folks to attend who, um, had, uh, specific , um, items on the agenda, so, um, I would really look to probably, you know, within the month, I think if, I'm not a betting person, but if I were, I would probably bet on, you know, on, um, a live meeting here in the very near future.
Yes.
Okay, alright, well, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you all.
We look forward to that.
Look forward to it. Yep, bye.
Okay, thank you. Good night, now.